Okay, it is 6:00 PM. I'm going to call this meeting of the North Adams City Finance Committee to order. First is roll call, Council Blackman.
Yes.
Council Fitch.
Here.
And Council Shade here. We have a floor. First up on the agenda is discussion of the Northern Berkshire Vocational School District. And with that, Superintendent Brosnan, please.
It's a pleasure, thank you very much.
One moment.
If I may, just for the general public, we're on page fourteen of the budget, line seven eighteen. Page four, fourteen, line seven eighteen. Also, there are the packets on the table of the budget and classification papers.
Thank you. Okay, please continue.
Ready to go. Thank you very much. Brief introduction to the budget, then I will go through the tables, the line items, if we have any questions, and explain those items. And then conclude with what's going on in McCann, futures, and what has been successful this year. Once again, always thank you for the support. It has been, you know, for the last thirty years, something that I look forward to, talking about the school, looking at that, and being good fiscal stewards of the taxpayer dollar to maximize that. One of the items that I would tell you to lead off this evening is McCann's Chapter Seventy increased some $35,000. If, once we get into those, that's a very small increment. So that will treat itself into a little bit more above the minimum in the budget document itself to forestall that piece. Certainly legislatively, we are all advocates, all superintendents, Barbara, myself, advocates for changes to the formula or increases, but right now, deal with the facts. One of the items that is very important to us, that was an advantage, is that our Chapter Seventy-one regional transportation increased by some $40,000, which has a direct effect on how much is assessed out to member communities. So, bad news, Chapter Seventy-one only went up $35,000, good news, the transportation went up forty. As we go through part of that piece, I'd like to traditionally go through all of the tables, and if you have the document in front of you, we'd start with Table One. In looking at Table One, we have the five-year look back, we can go back to FY twenty-two, so you get a chance to see where the income was. Going back into the FY twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, you saw appreciable and significant increases in that Chapter Seventy. Now you notice that from last year to this year, you see the smaller increase, and that does obviously affect transportation, significant increases. So we're very, very pleased in that item. We've increased the amount of out-of-district tuitions that are used to offset in this budget. The municipal minimum assessments gone up by formula, some $147,000 across all, all over the communities. And at the end of the day, when we look at transportation assessment, we're able to scale that down because we have the increase in the Chapter Seventy-one. Also in this table, that you would notice that the municipal assessment has increased from last year's $270,000 to this year $412,000. Go back to the left and look at $112,000, $102,000, and then go back to FY twenty-two and see where it was, $507,000. Go to the top of the page, look at the Chapter Seventy increases, and you see the significant increases in the state aid, which enabled us to lower that above the minimum. So we're in that kind of valley in between. And in the educational world, our dollars are by feet. In the case of North Adams, when we get, if there are any questions on Table One, I'll certainly answer them. If not, we'll move on to Table Two, which affects exactly what's going to happen with the city.
Any questions on Table One?
Yeah, quick question for me. The $412,188 municipal assessment, is that just North Adams assessment, or is it...
Nope, that's the entire district. That's all nine communities.
Thank you for clarifying.
If you go to Table Two, where we're going now, you can take a look at North Adams. Overall, the year from last year to this year, the overall budget increase assessment to North Adams in all, whether it's statutory or it's the over the minimum of transportation, is some $12,000. Why? That's because the enrollment that we'll look at in Table Three has decreased from 163 students last year to 150 in the calculations here. So really, it's all about the feet that walk in the door, and money follows the student, and so that is why we have that change. The statutory minimum is $912,000, the transportation assessment $41,000, and $129,000, which is your share of the $412,000. And you can see, if we look at Table Two, and then we're now going to turn to Table Three, and then you can see the population. And now in that table, you're looking at, that's why these numbers are all in flux, and that's why every year to year, communities change. Last year, 163, the year before, 164. Follow it out to FY twenty-two, there were 177. But go back to nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, you'll see 165, 149, 139. So statistically, we're in about that area, yes, thirteen less. However, one doesn't know what's going to happen in next year's piece, but as we look, it's really a statistical average that he, the numbers do rectify from one year they're up, and the next year they're down. Also, what we also do is, when we get the Chapter Seventy-one, it comes in two payments. I could have said twenty years ago that I never trusted the second payment to be equal to the first. In those days, the second payment used to be a little bit smaller, and so we'd have to scramble a little bit. In the last decade or so, the second payment has somehow been a little bit higher than the first, and so we're, I never called DESI and say, "Why?" We just deposit those and move on, and it's really a part of the allocation of the funds and through the DESI Finance Office. So the good news is, whenever that settles up at the end, we then take the cost of the transportation minus the Chapter Seventy-one, and that's the assessment, so we do have refunds and returns. Last year, we returned some $27,000. So the more state aid, we only use those funds in transportation for transportation. We don't allocate it to any other portion of the budget, we return it to the unit. So that's displayed on that Table Three. Yes?
And that's because you're making an estimate of what your transportation is going to be...
Correct.
Because they're still fighting over the budget, we won't have those numbers until probably the middle of July, I'm guessing this year.
Yep.
That's why we end up with a refund.
Right.
Some years, hopefully, because I'm guessing you're conservative on your estimates.
I am on that piece. DESI will tell me it's $420,000. There's a little bit more of that flexibility I put into it, then once we get the real figure, maybe it's $430,000, and so that ten gets allocated, hence we get into refunds. It's the most equitable thing, but it's also the surest thing, because I don't have a real factor. This is their estimate, so. Good point.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I have a question.
Yes.
This shows your enrollment, do you have any out-of-district students?
We do. And that's, okay, I'm going to have to do the math between that, I didn't, there's some 45, 50 students or so?
Okay.
Briefly, I will look at Table Four, just because that will come up in my final conclusions when I'm talking about the capital project from the future, the MSBA project. This is how the capital assessment is calculated, and so in this particular case, North Adams would have 27.65%. Previous calculations in Table Three, at the top, the proportion of cost is used for two things, is used for transportation and over the minimum. So that $412,000, that's assessed on the proportion of cost piece because that's student population. Capital is a different part, and it's calculated this way. So that'll come up in terms of my final. There are no other questions, we go right to the budget.
Any other questions? Please continue.
I'm open. Part of it is, if you see any of these line items that you'd like me to elaborate on, please let me know, I'll try and identify some that have some sort of changes or significant changes. For the most part, you'll notice these numbers are pretty darn close to what they were in previous years, escalating for inflation, escalating for higher salaries and that type of thing that is individually borne. So I'm on Table One, if there are any... Page one. Page two. And we'll note at the bottom, one of the items under Teaching Salaries in a separation with the ELL salaries, you'll notice a series of zeros over the years, as we do accounting, and finally, with the end of the year, School Report. We hadn't had ELL students before, and so we didn't have a line item in the budgets who we've created that piece, and a proportion of the teacher salaries is now allocated to that, so that in our reporting, it's accurately reported to DESI. That's one of the changes. The others in the salaries, we are closing our surgical tech post-secondary program. Reason we're closing the program, the last two students graduating Monday, is that the National Accrediting Agency, three years ago, four years ago, but with a series of delays over the years for their implementation, requires any program that's a surg tech program to be able to offer an associate degree. Luckily, we were able to have an agreement with Berkshire Community College to award that degree and finish, so this is the last group that's going to go. And it really is effective, it affected a lot of schools nationwide, and there's a series of the surg tech programs closing for that reason. So we have one less, but at the same time, we're putting our second heating, ventilating, air conditioning instructor in, so it's kind of a trade-off, lose one, gain one. So we really pretty much stayed the same.
Council Blackman?
Under Student Services, Contracted Services, 21, 10, 3, 49, oh four, went from 31 to 15.
Right. Part of what we've done with those students, looking, one student came off the ELL service list, and then as we went through in the program, one of the items, it's what is the expectation with services? In terms of the contract services versus also going back to the teaching services, so we have a staff member that is now doing a lot of what we used to have when we initially came in and say, "But we have to find somebody to do this for us." Contracted services are going to be reduced.
Any other questions?
Yeah, a question under the Principal category, I was just wondering, under Conferences and Trainings, I remember being surprised last year as well that that cost had dropped a little bit, I was just wondering, are there fewer opportunities for conferences or educational opportunities for leadership?
Yeah, we lose, you know, what we use, Councilor, is that an awful lot of grants fund the professional development activities, so we can minimize that which is in our light item budgets for that purpose. So professional development continues, the opportunity is there, the attendance is there, it's just covered in a different way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Page Three.
Any questions on Page Four? Seeing none.
Page Four.
Any questions on Page Four? Seeing none. Any questions on Page Four?
Yes, I did have a question about, and I believe I asked the same one last year, so forgive me if I'm being redundant, but about contracted services for testing and assessment, and we saw it quite a lot last year and again this year. Could you remind us what that is for?
IEPs are redone every three years, and so when students are going through that process, that's the independent school psychologist that would be doing those reviews.
Thank you. I also have a question on that, for that and psychological services, there's two different contracted service lines, is there a reason for having them separated?
They are two, one is focused on the retesting that's tied to special education services and requirements. The other is that we have found, this is post-COVID, but as we found, the students that we have in schools today are needing more and more support services, more psychological services, more counseling services, more of those services. So to provide that, we've put funds into those categories, so that we can provide those services to students and their families. It just keeps increasing, you know, as we go forward.
In the future, could those be labeled just a little different, so we know the differences between the two?
Sure.
Because they're just line items, it's like contracted one.
Right.
Contracted and contracted, what's the difference?
Trick is the 27, 20, and the 2800, those are our reporting categories with DESI, that's why those numbers were used in that particular point. Most of the time is when you have those students who are going through the three-year reevaluations, that's from the preponderance of the time, and the professional values used, so.
Isn't that the 330, sorry, is the 334 the every-three-year evaluation?
Contract services on that piece, no, no, that's the 27, 20, 3, 4, 8. Contract services sped.
3, 4, 8?
Yep, yep, under testing and assessment. And psychological services, all students.
Thank you. Any other questions on Page Five? Moving on to Page Six. Any questions on Page Six?
Could we just have a refresher as to what school security looks like at McCann?
Refine that question a little bit for me, so I can pinpoint...
Sure. What is involved in school security that requires a clerical salary?
Right. Well, first of all, when we put the doorstops in, we put all the camera systems in, this is a half-clerical position, okay? It's, the salaries are allocated to this, and that's for our reporting pieces, but somebody's got to press that buzzer, somebody has to be looking in that camera to let the people in during the day. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
That's fine.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, Page Seven. Any questions on Page Seven?
Just to comment on how delightful it is to see building maintenance budget go down as opposed to up.
We've been at this for a long time, making sure everything is working, we're trying.
Well done.
Yes. Moving on to Page Eight.
Our health insurance costs, members of the Berkshire Health Group, is an increased, statutory increase of 16%, so that's really the driver between the increases in the individual insurance line items.
Any questions on Page Eight? I do have one question.
Sure.
Gym rehabilitation has been zeroed out for the past several years, is there a reason that you still have the line item for?
Yeah, because I'm going to substitute another project in the future, so I just wanted to make sure my spreadsheets added up correctly, so that's as simple as it is. I'm not as sophisticated as the other, but I left it there as kind of a reminder that the last time, and it would keep going off to the left, that was the last time that we had borrowed any funds, in about $750,000, you know, at the time, to do the gym rehab and locker rooms and all of that, and floor and that type of thing. So kind of kept it there because it will be replaced going forward, you know, with another capital project. So that's why we left it there.
Excellent.
So I'm going to lose my place.
Any other, any questions on Page Eight? Seeing none. I believe that's the entire budget.
That is the budget. And if I may, my conclusion is that I had mentioned in the very beginning a couple of wrap-up pieces. One, as you know, we're fully involved in our heating, ventilating, air conditioning building, that was built with a $3.1 million state grant, occupied by students this past fall, working out great, for those of you that have been down, if you haven't, we'll set something up maybe in the fall, go through and see that, and the other changes at the school. What we also did this year is that we submitted a statement of interest with the Mass School Building Authority for the Accelerated Repair Program. Concept is to replace the leaking roof, which was new in 1997, so I still refer to it as a new roof, and also to replace the 1962 original single-pane glass, and a lot of the rotted-out wall structures that they hold. In McCann, there's two parts, some windows that are parked into the concrete fashion, others are steel-framed walls that go from ceilings, I mean, go from footings all the way up to roofline, so those metal frames will have to come out and be replaced. That project is currently, has been approved by the School Building Authority, we are working, we have an OPM assigned by them, we have an architect assigned by them, we've had several meetings in terms of the projects, they came out, probably about sixteen different engineers came out of three days during the April school vacation, and went through every aspect in their investigative surveys of the building, and are now writing plans. Early June, certainly to our committee for review on this, what we anticipate to be the sixteenth of June, because it has to be transmitted no later than the twenty-sixth of June, I believe, to MSBA for their approval, review and approval in their August 27 meeting. So given those kind of quick, fast-moving parts, we don't know how much. What we do know is that we have been approved for 64% reimbursement from MSBA, so whatever that number is, 64% of the project will be paid for by MSBA. With an anticipated start that we're doing next summer and into the fall to finish off on the windows, so we're kind of looking at a very late spring, perhaps May-June, if everything is approved, and we have everything set and ready to go, to do the roof, and then continue on through the summer. We've adjusted our school calendar, come back earlier, giving more time next June for the projects to start. So I would anticipate that I would be coming before you sometime in very late August or early September, when I have a dollar amount, we've done the calculations. Part of it is go back to Table Four, that's the percentage that North Adams would be responsible for of that piece. So project comes out with a dollar amount, we do have to authorize the entire project by vote, and done that before, so you know how that works, but knowing that 64% is going to be returned, which is an excellent return rate, so we're very pleased with that in that particular project. So that's the bigger of the news going forward, so it's a bit of a scramble, there's nothing factual that I can tell you this evening, but it's going to be a very, very busy summer, that's for sure.
Thank you. Council Blackman?
So although you have to borrow the whole amount, and then get paid back, the City of North Adams would be responsible for roughly 27% of the 36%?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Correct, correct.
Not 27% of the total, but 27% of the 36%.
Correct.
Just want to clarify that.
Real dollars, yep.
For other people, too.
Yep.
Excellent. Any other questions for McCann? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I move that we recommend voting in favor of the McCann budget to the full City Council.
Do we have a second?
Second?
Do we have a second? All in favor? This is roll call vote. Council Blackman?
Yes.
Council Fitch?
Yes, absolutely.
And I am a yes as well, three yanks, motion carries.
Councilors, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming tonight.
May I take this, please take it away?
Thank you, Councilor Shade. So I provided you with a copy of some slides that were provided to the financing facility Subcommittee of the School Committee and to the School Committee as we were doing our work on the School Committee side with getting budget approval through the School Committee. And the reality is, we actually start our budget process, and this year particularly, we started back in October, really looking at some of the various variables that we needed to consider with respect to the budget. And last year, we really needed to be very conscious of the fact that we were seeing the end of a significant amount of federal funding that we had received through the Elementary and Secondary Education Recovery Act funds. And because those funds were coming to an end, we knew we were going to have to make some significant decisions with regards to the FY twenty-five budget, and to just kind of remind everyone and put it in context, we did close a school, Graylock Elementary School, we did reconfigure the remaining grade spans so that we could consolidate, and we had a pre-K P2 school at Brayton, a three-through-six school at Colgrove Park Elementary, and the high school remained a seven-through-12 high school. So because we did that major change, which was a very heavy lift for everyone on our staff, our teachers, our families, our students, we really felt that it was important this year that we worked really hard to create stability. We had the big upheaval last year, let's create some stability so that our students, our teachers, and our families could kind of settle from that. In setting our budget priorities, the main one that we wanted to achieve was that we would create a level service budget that was going to maintain the existing learning environment. And then we always look at data as we start this budget process. You will see we have a backwards look of enrollments, knowing that Chapter Seventy is an enrollment-based formula. And while we have not seen a significant decline in enrollment, we do continue to see a trend that aligns with many projected enrollments indicating that our enrollment has declined. At the same time, though, if I can ask you to look at some of the other graphs that I provided for you, looking at the district with respect to the state, our number of low-income students has seen a particularly increase that has been maintained for the last four years. Our special education population has increased significantly above the state average, and that is not necessarily unique to North Adams Public Schools. We are seeing that more likely in municipals, North Adams being the smallest municipality. We are part of a trend that we're seeing where there seems to be an increasing level of need within our student population. That can be attributable to the impacts of the pandemic, but not necessarily in all cases. We've always had a percentage that was slightly higher than the state, it just has increased. And so taking those two factors, our economic disadvantage, our low income, and our special education students, many of whom overlap within each of those subgroup populations, we are identified as having a significant level of high need, and you can see our 2025 numbers indicated there. I did want to mention that when you're looking at enrollment figures or any of these demographic figures, we are using the October first state-identified data based... first state identified data, um, based, uh, so that we're ma, we're making, you know, kind of a line in the sand because all of these change over the course of the year. So, we could get a family move-in that would change our enrollment, but also maybe, um, fit in one of these other categories and also be identified as high need. So, with our budget considerations, uh, the school committee has worked very diligently to really focus in on, um, decreasing our teacher shortage and really trying to maintain competitive salaries, not just in our area of teaching, but also in some of our other areas, um, teaching assistants, power professionals, um, cafeteria workers, you know, really negotiating contracts that work commensurate with Berkshire County, um, so that we're kind of more in the lower end of the middle of the pack as opposed to the lower, lower end, so that we can remain competitive with surrounding districts. Um, so negotiated contracts have been developed, maintaining regional competitiveness. And then, our other budget considerations, um, I am going to ask Mr. Simon, um, who is our Director of Student Support Services, to speak to the issue that we have with out-of-district tuition costs. Um, you all may recall that a few years ago, um, the state set the, um, tuition rate at a significantly higher rate, in part because the out-of-district tuition residential and day placement programs did remain open during the pandemic. And so, they needed to be able to staff those positions and maintain staff, staffing. And so, there was a response to that through the OSD. Uh, however, we're now seeing that more students are requiring that level of service. And so, coupling the higher percentage with more student need, um, has made this a, a budgetary consideration. With that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Simon.
So, before the pandemic, we would typically have somewhere between eight to ten students who may need a higher level of care than we're able to provide in a public school setting, which requires us to typically contract with a private special education program such as Hillcrest or Mill Pond or some of the other, there's, there's several of them throughout the state. Um-
Can you speak louder, please?
Sure.
Here, here.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I always feel like I'm yelling.
Please, yeah.
No, not enough.
Typically very expensive. Those are our highest cost, um, situations. We do have the ability to apply for reimbursement from the state through our Circuit Breaker program, which we do every year. Um, since we've returned from the pandemic, um, we, we have seen a number of students who are still in those programs throughout the pandemic and a significant increase in the number of students who required that level of care, um, after following the pandemic. Um, significantly, many of those placements are not necessarily placements that we've made. There's situations where, um, and Dr. Malkus alluded to this, a family moves into town that has a student who's already in a placement, then, and we become responsible for that, um, that child, that student's tuition over time. Um, more often than not, though, we have situations where the Department of Children and Families is involved, and they may place a child in a group home setting. Potentially, their, their home life has, has some significant needs. They require some significant needs residentially, and the department will then place them in a group home setting. The only group home that we have in Berkshire County is the key program in Pittsfield. So, we do have, you know, relationship with them. But oftentimes, those placements end up happening in Springfield, Worcester, Boston, wherever there happens to be an open group home. When that happens, we then become a cost-share partner with DCF on that student's tuition, which becomes, you know, is part of our budget. And, and it's one of those situations where we get a notice from the state that says, here, this is, this is your student. And then, we become involved. They are our students, and we jump into the process. We, we participate in all of the meetings and whatnot, um, and, and in the planning. However, the, it is a significant cost. I mean, the tuition to a, not a district day program locally might reach fifty to sixty thousand dollars for one student per day. A residential program can easily reach up to four hundred thousand dollars or more, depending on the needs of the student. So, those, those tuitions are never entered into lightly, um, but it typically is what is necessary. The team makes a decision, um, determination based on the, the student's needs, the challenges that they're facing, and the level of service that needs to happen. So, it's a very thorough process, um, and very confident in all of the placements that are necessary. However, that number has risen significantly. So, this year, instead of the eight to ten that we typically see, we have, uh, we've had twenty-two students, um, replacements, twenty-three, actually. Um, and of those, twelve students were placed by the department. Um, so.
Are the twenty-three residential or day?
Combination.
Or combination?
Combination, yeah. It's not broken, I don't have it broken down by day or residence.
So, twenty-three combined.
And that figure, you know, it, it accounts for about three point three million dollars in costs, um, for tuition. Now, we are able to make a claim on that through Circuit Breaker for about, our claim this year will be around one point eight million dollars, and we'll get a portion of that back. Um, but it's still a significant cost to the district.
Okay. And on the last page of the preamble, if you will, uh, the budget considerations for out-of-district tuition costs, you can see that change over time and how it has increased over the last, um, six years, five years, uh, really following the pandemic. And then, once we've, we've gotten to this highest point, it seems to have kind of leveled off. At least, that's what we're going to bank on, that we're going to see approximately the same number of students. Um, and the cost will be leveling off as well. So, in terms of funding sources, um, I've already mentioned Chapter 70 state aid, and, um, as my colleague who went before me, uh, Mr. Brosnan has spoken to that, um, Chapter 70, uh, state aid for us. We have seen an increase in our state aid. However, it is an enrollment-based formula. Um, and that enrollment-based formula, it was predicated on a cost of living increase that is capped at four point five percent. And in this past couple of years, they've actually, um, gone with a lower cost of living increase into the Chapter 70 formula, lower than four point five. And so, um, and neither four point five or the actual value that was used in Chapter 70, um, actually meets what is the actual cost of living increase. So, so we're seeing, while we're seeing an increase mainly due to the Student Opportunity Act, um, we're not seeing a significant increase there. There's the city contribution, uh, which we are very grateful for. Uh, North Adams has been known to support their public education, uh, schools. We also have our school choice revolving account, which we have been very diligent about working to reserve those funds over the years, uh, in order to be able to, um, help support the budget. The issue is that that's not an unlimited resource. And when we are using those funds to help support the overall budget, we have to think about those costs that can come up. For example, the student who moves into the district who has an out-of-district tuition placement, rather than having to come back to the city to ask for more money in order to support those students, we have been relying on the use of school choice funding. And then, our Circuit Breaker reimbursement, which Mr. Simon has already alluded to, and then grant funding, which, um, up until recently, uh, Dr. Callahan has been overseeing our use of grant funds. And there are some concerns there, um, as we look at the national scene. Um, we know that Title I and our special education funding, our IDEA funding, those are through, um, congressional oversight and appropriation. Uh, it would take a change in the law for us to change those allocations. Um, however, uh, there has been some discussion about having that change occur so that they would be block grants to the state and therefore may have as much as a twenty to twenty-five percent decrease in the overall funding assigned to the state, which would then get, um, distributed to the local education agencies. A lot of our other programming that we offer, such as our Twenty-First Century After-School Program and Summer Programming, um, the Adult Basic Education Program, those are fully funded through federal grants that come to the state and then are funded to us, uh, as a local education agency. And, and those are funds that we are keeping an eye on. The, the area that is not represented in the budget, it's actually a separate budget, is our, uh, food services. And food services is the largest, uh, federal allocation towards public education. Um, and so, we are keeping an eye on that. However, we remain hopeful because many of the states that voted for the current administration also receive those funds and rely heavily on those funds as well. Um, right now, we are proceeding as if those funds will be in place, um, both our food service funds, Title I and IDEA. And so, when you go through the budget, you will see places where, um, there is a position, but the funds are not, are zeroed because those funds are actually coming from both, either Title I or IDEA.
Right.
Or another grant-funded source. So, with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Rousher, our Director of Finance and Operations, who can take you through the budget.
Before we begin, are there any questions so far? Seeing none, please?
Looking the budget down, um, into three funding sources. The first row there is Chapter 70, um, which this year, uh, we've received an increase, a slight increase, I'll call it, of one point seven six percent. Um, and the funding as of right now is sixteen million, seven hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-two, which is an increase of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars. Um, we can skip school choice for now because I'll explain that as a differential in a minute. Um, so if you look at the third category, local funding, that's the city's contribution to the proposed budget. And this year, uh, for the first time in five years, we are looking, uh, we're asking for an increase from the city in support of the budget. And, um, the increase would be in the amount of the hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars, which is a three point nine two percent increase over the, each prior year's funding, uh, going back to, um, 2022. Uh, and actually, the year prior to that, FY21, the city funding was actually higher. It was closer to, um, three point nine million. So, it dropped off in FY22, um, because of, uh, the benefit of the ESAR funding. So, we were able to maintain that lower rate for the last few years. This is the year where, where looking for an increase from the city. So, that's the hundred and fifty thousand, four sixty-one, which is an increase of three point nine two percent. Um, it was very important to maintain a certain amount of stability, uh, within the schools, particularly the elementaries, going into FY26, given that this was the first year of our new configuration. So, we wanted to maintain a stable environment as possible for students, families, and staff. So, with that being said, uh, we looked at what the needs of the district actually were. And this year, we, we, um, are funding additional money through school choice, uh, in an, an amount that's substantially higher than what we've typically done in the past. So, that's that nine hundred and forty thousand and eight dollars that you see in that middle row of school choice funding. And that's an increase of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one over, uh, the contribution from FY25. So, that's the biggest increase, of course. It's a thirty-nine point two-one percent increase. So, if you combine those three funding sources, the overall budget is the twenty-one, six, three, six, two, two, one. When you look at it net of the school choice contribution, what I've highlighted in yellow, that's the amount that we actually would be seeking approval on, um, tonight, which is the twenty-six, nine, six, two, one, three. So, that's when you take out the offset from school choice. It's the, the addition of Chapter 70 and local funding. In the budget would be twenty-six, nine, six, two, one, three, which is a four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one, one hundred and seventeen dollar increase, which is two point one seven percent. Does anyone have any questions on that? So, it just, just what we've, the way we're viewing the school choice contribution is, as I said, I described the reasons why we're doing that this year. And Barbara already alluded to the fact that longer term, that level of funding through school choice isn't sustainable. Um, and so, but this year, we're comfortable doing it. As a benchmark, a good practice is to maintain a reserve of about five percent in your school choice of, relative to your overall budget. And where, um, we will be just about at that with this nine hundred and forty thousand dollar deduction. So, we're very comfortable with it in terms of, you know, the impact on the school choice reserve fund.
Thank you for explaining.
The next page is a summary page. Um, if, that's basically going into a little more detail from what was on the page we just reviewed. Um, I think it might be more beneficial for you if we go to the detail that underlie, is underlying here. So, if we skip to the next section, which is District Leadership and Administration.
Page four.
Page four. Um, similar to what, um, you just saw from McCann, we've got a lot of detail. And in our case, I think we have thirty pages around, yeah, twenty-nine pages. So, we can just spend a little time looking at this. I want to show you that the, uh, anything that's highlighted in light pink is partially grant-funded. Uh, anything that's in a bold or pinky peach is fully grant-funded. And that's to give you a sense of the offset from grant funding. So, when there's a dollar amount, that, that amount is actually being funded through the operating budget. But I've shaded them so that you understand that, um, there's an offset through grant funding. And as Barbara said, in cases where you're seeing zero and zero, that position has not been eliminated. It's just fully grant-funded.
Which starts, I believe, on page six, because I don't see anything on page four.
Yeah, page four is the grants and special project.
Oh, yours didn't come out highlighted?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Wait, no, page four and five aren't highlighted.
Yeah.
Huh, mine, the one I'm looking at is.
Line thirty, line thirty-four.
Yeah, because of four.
Okay. Mine is highlighted as well.
So, uh, line thirty-four on page four, the Grants and Special Project Coordinator is, um, indicated.
Right, okay.
And that's correct.
Cool. Going on to academic leadership, uh, we didn't have any subs, most of the increases you're seeing are contractual increases or, and then eventually you'll see increases to utilities. Um, we didn't really add a lot. In fact, we didn't really add anything, really change. The variances you're going to see for the most part are just reallocation of funding to better reflect what the spending has been over the last couple of years.
If I can say, on page six, line eighteen, thirty-five, thirty-nine, and forty, um, those positions have not been eliminated. They're just being fully funded through grants.
Moving on to page seven, there's no grant funding there. Um, and the, a significant change here of an eight percent increase, uh, that's a result of a staff FTE change where student need, uh, required going from a point eight to a point nine.
Division Special, so line twenty-nine.
Right. And then, there were also some, um, adjustments to, uh, teaching salary as a result of credit movement within the salary grid. Again, that's all contractual in that case. Uh, page eight, the biggest increase here is the bus, uh, transportation, which is line seventy-four. And that's per our contract with DuFor. This is our fourth year of a five-year contract. It's a three-year contract with the option to extend into year four. And then, again, we have the option for year five. And this is based on, uh, the CPI Urban Index as of January. And we just adjust the rate based on that indicator. Page nine, there's really not anything to call out unless anyone has any questions.
Any questions so far?
I did have one question, but it was back on page four, if I remember correctly. It's about advertising, we discussed in last night's council meeting about advertising costs. That's for, is that advertising cost for like public posting notices?
Yes, yes.
Meetings?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What's that?
Do you, is it also include when you-
Do bids?
Bids and all that, but what about you have an opening, you throw an ad up?
Most of our advertising is through school spring and high berk shares. And the, that is primarily for public notices.
Okay.
If we put something out to bid.
So, you put that in a different place?
The School Spring?
Yeah.
Yeah. Tom, that comes out of the technology.
Comes out of our technology subscriptions.
Yeah, we have that under subscriptions. Yeah.
Page 10. Yep, page 10. The bit, one, one big change here to note is line 13 is an increase in the Facilities Director's salary. That's the result of, that has been a shared position for the last couple of years with Husick Valley. The needs of both districts are such that, that's no longer a shared position. That position is coming back full-time to North Adams Public Schools. And the, the adjustment reflects that position being returned to a 1.0. The heating lines have some significant increases going into FY '26. And that was something that I started budgeting for in October of '24, and tracked very closely. And the increase is the result of increased usage this year because of a colder winter, and also the rising cost of gas. And that's what this is based on. And also looking at any kind of future indicators. Electricity, you'll also see some variances within the schools. We've worked closely with the city over the course of this year to try to rationalize the various accounts that the city has. The city is involved in a net metering credit program. And we view that participation as part of a citywide participation. This year, we've worked closely with Sharon others to better indicate what the actual allocation should be per meter. So that's what those changes are, more than anything, is just trying to rationalize things and try to have it be more realistic, more reality-based. We made some changes to capital items and custodial supplies. You'll see on line, sorry, skip supplies, on page 10. Custodial supplies has increased by $40,000. That's a reallocation. The Facilities Director prefers to do a lot of purchasing on a district-wide level, as opposed to on a school-based level. So you'll see a corresponding decrease in some of the school supply lines in support of that $40,000 increase there. And then the other $25,000, in support of that, you'll see a reduction in the capital items line. So that was a reallocation within the facilities budget. Moving on to page 12, there's some, the biggie here is line 99. And that's a big drop from last year. You probably recall, we had a substantial increase for the FY '25 budget in anticipation of all the staff changes, as a result of the consolidation of the schools. So this year, we're, we're going back to a more typical dollar amount, so you see that significant decrease there. And line 110, that's the custodial care, is what it's called in the budget. It's the out-of-district tuition that we referenced earlier. And that number is about 50 percent of what the total cost for out-of-district tuition will be next year. We're projecting it to be a little over 3.2 million. And so the balance of that would be paid through Circuit Breaker and the 240 Fed Sped, Federal Sped Grant that we get. So Lisa, to your question earlier, what, what we've started to do as a practice, and I know, I think we talked about this last year, is to not spend the current year's Circuit Breaker in favor of rolling it over, so that we have a better unders, you know, we can anticipate what we'll have available to cover next year's costs. And that's something we're encouraged to do by DESI. So that dollar amount is a little over 1.3 million, that we've been able to preserve this year to carry into next year, to offset the total cost of this 3.2, 3.3 million dollars. And then we have about $260,000 coming out of the Fed Sped Grant, also to help offset that.
So that's a net?
What's that?
That number's a net.
That's the net impact to the operating budget, yeah. And that number, ultimately, in terms of the way we actually will manage it behind the scenes, with the 900, was it $940,000 that we're looking at from school choice, when I go to enter the budget, that 1.6 million is actually going to be reduced to, like, $763,000, because it's going to be offset by the $940,000 from school choice. That's how we lower it. That's, it's that number.
Yep. My question actually was, Voc Tech out of district, we don't have any?
We, we don't, the city actually pays tuition for Voc Tech out of district.
Oh, okay.
We pay for any transportation, so we did, that number was included here. That student is on waiting list, so we needed to budget it. We're not 100 percent sure if, if it's going to come to fruition, but we coordinated with the city on that.
So then it's free cash next year?
Any questions on operations?
And just to clarify, for anybody who might be listening in, we are member districts to McCann Technical. So that's not considered an out-of-district vocational.
Got it.
Right, and out-of-district would be Smith in Northampton, or Taconic has a program where they offer programs that aren't available to our North Adams students, a program that they're interested in. And in that case, it goes through the superintendent's office and.
Smith stands to be the most right.
Any questions on operations from the committee members? Counselor Higginson?
Yeah, just a question about maintenance. I saw that, you know, there's a zero line under coffee machine for Graylock. But undergrounds maintenance, is Graylock's ground still being maintained in the interim?
They are. And we've started to just roll any expenses related to Graylock through the district budget. We still have our Facilities Department does a walkthrough of Graylock every day, just making sure, you know, that the, that it's in good order.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions from the councilors? Seeing none, any questions from the gallery?
All right, so moving on to the individual schools, the first one is Brayton. Up towards the bottom of page 13, lines 36 through 39, those are for classroom teachers whose salaries are partially funded through the CPPI grant, which is an early, a grant for preschool, early childhood.
Partnership.
Yeah, community partnership.
Community partnership. Partnership initiative.
Moving, moving on to page 14, you'll see a couple of wild swings. It's literally just a reallocation of kindergarten to first grade, to reflect the, what the principal did this year. And you could always see that change again, depending on the number of kids enrolled in kindergarten, first grade, or second grade. So you'll see, for instance, in line 47, there's a drop of $52,000. But you see, the next row is row 48, which is an increase of $55,000. So that just reflects a teacher moving from kindergarten to first grade. The, again, brighter orange-colored ones, those are title reading positions, those are fully funded through Title I. The personal care assistant at the bottom is fully funded through the Federal Sped Grant. On page 15, you see the addition on page 80, row 86, of a behavior interventionist. That increase reflects a position that actually exists this year, and that was a result of reallocating funds from a principal-on-assignment position that we had put in the budget for FY '25 at Drury, that, once that position, the, the person left. And so we reallocated those funds in support of other positions that were needed in the, in the district, and that was one of them. Substitutes, the increase of $22,250, line, row 92. That, you'll see in each of the schools, a similar dollar amount. That reflects the adjustment we did to our substitute pay scale this year. The school committee reviewed, we benchmarked what other districts in the area were doing. The schools were having a real hard time finding substitutes, so we had to do an overhaul of our pay scale. And that's the impact of the substitute pay. And when you combine the three schools, it's basically the equivalent of one teaching Again, you see a lot of grant-funded positions. Brayton, of course, is pre-K through grade two. So you'll see a lot of grant-funded positions there, through the title grants primarily, and also the CPPI grant. If you don't have any questions there, moving on to page 16, there's really nothing to call out, other than if you go down to row 166 on page 16, that's a school adjustment counselor. Again, as a result of reallocation of resources early in FY '25, we were able to take funding from a position that was no longer needed, and reallocated in support of adding a school adjustment counselor. That was to be split between Coal Grove and Brayton. And we want to carry that into next year. But it happens to be grant-funded, actually. That one's grant-funded, sorry. Page 17, anything under the 4,000 series operations, that's there for reference. You've actually already seen that in the, the operations budget itself. So it's really not a lot there, unless anyone has any questions. Page 18, we've moved into Coal Grove. These are all contractual obligations that we're looking at right now. Page, oh, row 52 on page 19, you'll see a decrease of $41,646. And that's a result of a change in staff, where what previously had been a full-time position is now being a shared position between Drury and Coal Grove. And that was the result of doing a lot of brainstorming, and a lot of good work with the principals, to come up with a solution that wasn't even necessarily driven by the budget, although we certainly were encouraging it. It was really the result of student need, and how the students could best be served with various resources that were available. So that was a great solution. I don't know if you want to say anything to that, or it's just?
Yeah, it was actually brought about collaboratively between Coal Grove Principal, Principal Meehan, and the Drury Principal, Principal Kapala, talking about the continuity of instrumental music services grades five through 12, and the decline in band students at, at the high school level, and the reality of only needing essentially two classes for the music teacher at the high school, freeing that music teacher up, who has a license K through 12, and has prior experience working at the elementary level, to actually work at Drury and also at Coal Grove, and build that continuity of instructional practice and instrumental music all the way through.
If no questions on page 19, we can move on to page 20.
We can have a question?
Yeah, just a quick question. What is Steeple's and Castles?
Those are special ed programs, substantially separate special education programs that we have in district. And with that, I, I see you're ready to jump.
No, I was just gonna say, I've got you trained so well.
Steeple's is a substantially separate special education program for students who have an identified social-emotional disability. Castles is a substantially separate program for students who are diagnosed as being on the autism, autism spectrum disorder.
Thank you.
Nice job. Any other questions?
Yep.
Yes.
Yep, could somebody explain a little greater detail, Brayton lines, page 13, lines 36 to 41? I understand that four of those pre-K programs are grant-funded, but this was, are we talking that there's six full-time classrooms, or are these six half-day classrooms, three teachers? What does that look like?
Excuse me, Ms. Barbara, could you just identify the lines again?
I can. It's the pre-K 36 to 41.
Okay, so several lines 40 and 41, those are actual classrooms that we fund fully through the local budget. And then line 36 through 39, there is a cost offset to that position through the Comprehensive Preschool Partnership Initiative Grant.
Yep, so my question is, are that, is that saying we are, these are six full-time classrooms, or are these six half-day programs, six active programs?
So two of them are half-day, two of the classrooms are half-day morning, half-day afternoon classrooms for three-year-olds.
Okay.
And then there are four full-day four-year-old programs in the building. And then the CPPI program, grant actually helps to fund two additional, three additional classrooms with Head Start and with Chalkhead and Berkshires as our partners in that program.
But, and that's outside of what's depicted here?
That's outside of this budget.
So what you're looking at is the equivalent of six full-time teachers.
Six full-time teachers.
Two of which are fully funded through the operating budget, and four are partially funded through CPPI.
Correct, okay. Thanks so much.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
We're on page 20.
So, did anyone have any questions on page 20?
Any other questions? Please continue.
Okay, and then on page 21, you just see the highlighted complement, the school adjustment counselor. This is the .5 split with Brayton. And as we said earlier, that's grant-funded. Going on, 22, there really isn't anything there that we haven't already looked at through the operations budget. So moving on to Drury, page 23, what you're looking at on the first page are all 23 contractual obligations, except for row 27, Principal on Assignment. I referenced that earlier. That was a principal that had been transferred from Brayton to Drury as part of the FY '25 budgeting process. That individual ended up leaving the district, and those resources were reallocated. So you see a complete, that, in this case, you see a zero in FY '26. That's because that position was actually eliminated. So going on to page 24, these are all really the results of primarily staff changes, reassignments by the principal. So that, any change here is, is literally, again, the difference in the teaching salary, or the addition of a class in favor of another class. So it's, there's, there's no real news here.
I have a question.
Yep.
Line 55, world languages, what exactly is that?
So that was something that was added post-budget approval FY '25, where I believe it was a math position, I can look at my notes here. This was based on student need. The principal decided to drop one class, maybe it was a math class, in favor of world languages, and so added this class in this teacher's salary. I don't know which languages is it?
French and Spanish. Historically, at least for the past five or, or six years, Drury had one Spanish teacher. Last year, we were able to add an additional teacher of Spanish and French.
Excellent, thank you.
All right. Page 25, there's, I just highlighted a behavior tech that is partially grant-funded. This, for the most part, are reassignments. We did have a significant negotiation this year with teachers assistants. So at all the schools, you're seeing an increase in those TA lines, and that reflects the new salary grade for TAs. 26, not really anything to call out, unless anybody has any questions.
Are there any questions so far? Continue, please.
Okay, page 27, um, this, row 187. I don't know if, if Tim or Tom, or anyone wants to speak to what we did with that. That was a position that was reassigned into the teaching positions at Drury.
Yep.
Go ahead, go ahead.
The shift recommended by Principal Kapala and her leadership team at Drury was, because of the exit of a school adjustment counselor, we had three to start the year, and then one ended up on maternity leave, and then deciding to resign to stay home with her family. That was an open position, and the need at Drury was not to fill that position, but actually to provide tier-one teaching instruction in health concepts. The new comprehensive health frameworks from DESI are not physical education frameworks, as you might think of them. That might be 20 percent. 80 percent of the new comprehensive health frameworks are more about social-emotional learning. And the high school leadership decided that the better course of action, instead of replacing a counselor position, would be to add a full-time health teacher, to focus on the new comprehensive health standards, in addition to what they're getting in PE class. So it ends up being a wash, in terms of one salary replacing another, it's just in a different part of the budget now.
And if we went back to page 20? And if we went back to page 24, it's row 66. That's one of the positions that I said was a reallocation. So you'll see an increase there of 62,886. And that reflects the salary of the person that would be assigned to that position. Does anyone have any questions on that? 189, 190, 191, those are either partially grant funded or 100% grant funded. Other than that, there's really nothing there to call out unless anyone has any questions.
The nurse, so we have an RN. Is that an FTE?
Yep.
Is the RN part of the teacher contract?
No.
Okay, is it an individual contract or do we have a scale?
It's a, it's a scale.
Okay.
Just...
It's a non-bargaining scale.
And that was adjusted this year.
I think we're getting a deal, I'm just saying.
Yeah, it's a scale based on credentials and years and...
When I first started, the school nurse salaries were $25,000 a year.
And that's pretty much it unless anyone has any other questions.
I don't have a question or comment. This is the most detailed school budget, I mean, down to the positions that I've seen in my 16 years on the council. When it started, we kind of got not a lot of information. And then the next administration came in and had a little bit more. And then we kept pushing by breakdown by school. We wanted like, okay, you've got three teachers or five teachers. So I just want to thank you all for this because it's pretty self-explanatory. If people have, I mean, it's there. It's like you have this many first grade teachers in this school and you have this many third grade teachers. And I know this is a daunting task to do this.
Thank you. And it just, it reflects, as Barbara said, we've been working on it since October. And it's a hugely collaborative process between the four of us and obviously many other people, you know, including people from district leadership.
And the school committee, Matt. The school finance committee met like three or four times grappling with this information. And then the school committee, Matt, as a whole, unanimously recommended this budget to all of you.
And thank you for noting the grants. It's helpful to get a handle on how much is funded.
Dick Althambright actually suggested, but highlighted them in some way and that was, we thought that was a great suggestion.
Yeah. Yeah, like a little column over to the side. This is, the salary is 80,000. 40,000 is covered by this grant, so this is what the school budget is. That's how I look at it, but yeah, this has come a long way in 20 years.
Great.
Are there any questions? First from the council? And from the gallery, Virginia?
So these are not line item questions, so I just kind of held them to the end. And I too appreciate being able to see what grant funding fits in. I think it's such an important part of the budget that it really is, creates a greater explanatory value. And I may, you may have said this and I just haven't heard it. What is the total amount of grant dollars that you receive? That's my first question.
It varies year to year and at any moment in time. Any, right now, I'd say between 3.7 million, 4 million. It can dip down to 2 and 1/2 million.
Okay, that's, that's good enough for me to just get that, that sense of it. I have to go back and look at that. What percentage of the budget?
It would be about 20% if you were doing it as part of the 20 million. But if you added it, it would be, it would be a little less than that.
A little less, right, okay, in the vicinity.
Yeah, sure.
And I think it's important to note that the grant funds, particularly through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, are very specific. So as my colleague who went before talked about, a lot of grant funds can be used for professional development. And so that's why in budget, you don't see a big ticket item for professional development. There is a ticket item for course reimbursement, that's a contractual obligation. But a lot of our professional development is funded through some very smart people writing grants that allow us to get some very targeted professional development. This year, we had quite a bit of professional development and support for professional development around mathematics instruction.
That's great. I, I think grants are just, I mean, you know, I'm so glad that you, I wasn't there, but we're focusing that on your presentation too when you went to the school committee.
If, if you factored in the circuit breaker, which is obviously not a grant, but it's another source of funding for us, then the budget's closer to, you know, 26 million, 27 million. So grant funding would be about 15% of that.
Okay, 15, okay.
And then the circuit breaker that we alluded to was 1.3 million.
On top of that or?
Yes.
I think it's also important to note that in addition to professional development, which you won't see as a big ticket item, instructional materials are not represented in the budgets entirely because most of the instructional materials are grant funded. So for example, just over the past couple of weeks, we were placing upwards of $60,000 of various instructional materials for different content, all grant funded.
Yeah, I think, I think getting that integrated view is not easy to create. But it's very useful to have, so like, you know, we're making progress on that, so.
And we do, just for your information, we, on a quarterly basis at our school committee meetings, we do provide a grant summary, which it gives you a real-time snapshot of what the status of the grants are and a depiction of the different initiatives that are supported.
I'll have to look for that, yes.
Most of what you saw tonight were salary positions and it was about 1.6 million dollars worth of salaries. So that, so you can see the balance of that. There's a lot, to Tim's point, that's going towards education and materials and supplies.
And that's a significant dollar amount, you know, in the budget. What percentage are federal, state, or other in the grants? And I ask that specifically because of the vulnerability of the federal funding.
So most of our federal funding is actually, it's allocated through the state.
Through the state, so it doesn't really...
IDEA, special education, Title I. It's money that's formulated to the state, the state educational agency. And then they write technically a sub-grant to the school district based on...
That's, that's a fair fact. I guess maybe the more direct question is what percentage of that money or amount of that money do you think could be at risk? And maybe that's just too hard to tell because what will happen in Washington is too hard to predict.
It's a difficult question to answer right now because while there's been a lot of things said, it's actually not filtered through into actionable items.
Yeah.
As I indicated earlier, the Title I and IDEA funding is authorized through Congress by law. So there would have to be a change in the law in order for those funds to be directly impacted. However, we do, we are concerned about the idea of those funds being appropriated through a block grant.
Yes.
Because that could have an inherent decrease with it. And then there could be some consideration of politics as to allocations based on state.
Yes.
So, so, but that's, none of that is...
You don't have any.
Defined.
Yeah.
So it's very hard to actually be prepared for, you know, a contingency plan. At this point, what we're being advised from both the state level as well as the federal level through the American Association of School Administrators is proceed as if that funding was flat. So, so not anticipating an increase. Could there be decreases? Yes, but we've not actually seen that.
That was my other one, another question. You have not had any funding cuts?
We had a small one on the food services side for about $12,000. That grant was pulled back, but so far, that's the only actual impact. But to answer, about 40% of the grants are federal entitlement grants.
40%.
Yeah, it's about 1.7 million.
And then I had a question on meals and food and, and students being at risk without, you know, I believe I heard at one point that, you know, there are three meals a day that are served through the schools. That, and what percentage, I don't know if there's a metric there that says what percentage of students or students and families or whatever are, are dependent on that?
We are full breakfast in the classroom and full lunch because our percentage of students who are directly certified is above the cap that has been set. And so that, we don't, we don't collect the papers anymore. That determines eligibility for food service. It's a direct certification because their parents are already enrolled in one of nine, one or more of nine, other agencies that are identified for direct certification. So, and, and the student, the percentage of students who participate in the supper program is really determined by the number of students who participate in our after-school programs. So that is probably about anywhere from 15 to 25% of our overall student population that participates in the, in the supper program. But in terms of our number of students who, the cap is, I believe, 55% for direct certification. And now, and we're considered 61%.
And actually, when you look at the percentages by school, it's higher than that at this point. And it's, it's 78% at Brayton, 70% at Coal Grove, and 64% at Drury. Everybody has free access, but if it went, if you were literally looking at the percentages, that's more than us.
Wow.
That's what it is.
I think that's like something, it has to sink in, what that says about the needs of the students and the community and the risks that they could be at right now. And then my last question, which you can be thankful it's my last question. You spoke something at the beginning about, I don't know if it was expenditure levels or per capita expenditure levels or whatever. You were, you were moving out of the low-low into the middle-middle and I didn't know if that was like an expenditure metric? Or is there an expenditure metric to say, how do we stack up in, like a per-student expenditure? Something I've seen, like, you know, this district spends X amount for students and this district spends X amount. Is that a useful metric, is this a metric to use?
Your, your report, did you have?
Oh, I, I didn't break it down based on a per pupil expenditure. I just did, but I, from having done that in the past, we are above the state average per pupil expenditure. But that may in fact be caught, be because of the inflated costs associated with special education.
Yes, yes, you kind of have to have a nuance on that, I'm sure. Well, as a citizen, I found this an informative presentation. I found it an informative presentation last year, so I thank you for that effort.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I just want to reiterate what Counselor Blackmer said earlier. It's great to see a budget so detailed, showing every single position as a line item. I love that because then you can see the actual impact of salaries for every position rather than everything bundled together. So I think that's really a great thing. And I thank you all for the time and effort you put into this. Mayor Matson?
If I may, I just would like to take the opportunity in front of the finance committee to thank Dr. Barbara Malkus for her stewardship and leadership through the school. The superintendent will be passing the torch to Dr. Callahan in retiring effective June 30th. But after we get through budget, we'll start using some vacation time. So Barbara, thank you.
Oh, thank you very much, thank you very much. It should be noted that one of the councilors was a former student of mine, so I'm ready to retire. I've been at this a while.
It was a fun class.
With that, do we have a motion?
I move to recommend to the full council approval of the school budget.
Do we have a second?
I'm sorry, North Adams Public School budget.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second, absolutely.
This will be a roll call vote. Counselor Blackmer?
Yes.
Counselor Vich?
Yes.
And I am also a yes, that is three yeses, motion carries, thank you, North Adams Public Schools.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everybody.
Great copse, everyone.